Call the regular meetings of the Village Board on February 11. If you're biased, put the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez, trustee Gray.
Here.
Holston.
Here.
Horne.
Here.
Pop.
Yeah.
Here's trustee basic. Absent, so it's four here, four present.
Nope, okay. No petition. Item E, open to the public, agenda items only. One of your comments in three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name and address, please. Okay. Fair enough. We're, we had a request to remove the minutes from the consent agenda. And other than that, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda absent the minutes.
Second.
Discussion, ma'am? Sheriff Holston and Horne.
Yes. The minutes come at me, that went out to the public?
It did, it did.
I'd like to talk about it.
Okay.
Did that happen in the vote?
We can do the discussion now, it's fine.
Discussion is before any votes, sir. And what's some part of the procedure now, Mike? I know those old minutes under L.
Yes, sir.
Line three.
Yes, sir.
After discussing the trip, return Las Vegas. The roll call was taken and he's in nays and it didn't pass. And then it says the motion failed to attend recon, looking for a grocery store and other new businesses. To me, that is a personal opinion that shouldn't be in there. I look at it a little angrily, it's, it's political involved. The, uh, the vote for trustees has come up very soon. This is leading the people to believe that the incumbent trustees were against a grocery store. Now, we were against going to Vegas. I was one that voted no. And my reasoning is we spent close to $20,000 on three different surveys stating that the village is not ready. It's not the right time. Population, medium income, amount of people, those were some of the reasons. The same, the same trustees voted six zero to be put on the radio station, five $50,000.
Five one correction.
Fifty one thousand, excuse me.
One trustee voted no.
One, oh, I'm sorry. Very good, sir.
Trustee.
And, uh, I'm saying if, so, this is, to me.
I don't have to pull.
Our local area and we wanted to be in favor of a grocery store.
Understood.
And I don't know what motivated the clerk to put this in there, if he's told to do it or what it is. But I feel it's a shot at the guys that are, you know, trustees that are incumbents that are running. And I'm angry by it.
Okay, I can appreciate your frustration there. As with, um, anything pertaining to consent agenda, there are things that if they're going to be pulled or challenged anyway whatsoever, then we had one of the trustees did call the office and asked for that to be addressed by means of either modified or pulled. Same item that you referred to, respectfully, that's what we're doing, to correct it. This has not been the approved minutes. This is merely the recommended minutes. And the goal was to get it corrected. Now, in talking to the other trustee that brought it up, Mr. Batista and myself both had a conversation with the trustee and the, I don't believe this was any kind of political jab. I understand how it might be taken that way. And it was not based on me giving anybody permission to write it this way. This is based on the court and the deputy clerk reviewing what took place and recording it as accurately as they felt relevant. Now, I will say this, the, the discussion I had with the other trustee would have been suffice to say that motion failed to attend recon, period. Or put the phrase that comes after that in parentheses, because a lot of people don't know what recon is. And that's part of what takes place at recon is you're looking to recruit retail businesses. Because recon in of itself is kind of an ambiguous label that nobody would even know what it was. That was part of the conversation that was taking place was about what are you going to do in recon? You're going to be looking for grocery stores, new little businesses. So that is just kind of a very digested and brief summary. I don't find fault with the accuracy of the statement, but I do appreciate the concern for the, perhaps, the placement or the grammatical form. I can, I can appreciate that. As far as I'm concerned, it would stand either way. It's just a matter of do we want our minutes to reflect not just the catchphrase recon? Or we want people to understand what recon actually is? And the adjustment was going to be to address it by putting parentheses around that last phrase or moving that phrase somewhere else or just simply eliminating it. Any of those would be available options. But if you want to go ahead and have a discussion pertaining to this, we can make that one adjustment at your direction now and be done with it so we don't even have to readdress it at the next meeting. So, we have a motion to, in a second, to approve the consent agenda unless the minutes. I think that the discussion pertaining to the minutes is not really relevant based on that because it's been with the hotel. But let's proceed with the vote on that. And then if we wanted to address what to do with specifically about the minutes, we can do that on the eyes of removing the consent agenda if that's okay. All right. So I heard a motion in a second. I'll undertake, I'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Okay. Items removed from the consent agenda. Minutes. What is the wish of the board pertaining to putting the phrase in parentheses? Would that suffice? Because that was what I was instructed by one of the trustees. Putting it in parentheses would clearly satisfy the fact that it's a description of what that event is. Is that okay?
Something in a motion?
I'm looking for, you, you start the discussion, I'll defer to you, sir.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Yep.
That's what's relevant now.
Okay.
To eliminate it totally.
To eliminate everything after the word recon, online?
Just line three. Just line two.
Well, you can't eliminate line three.
Why?
Because it says motion failed.
Can we just?
You have to record.
The roll call vote was two yeses and three nays. People could understand it, it didn't make.
We still have to record the motion failed is what we're going to do here.
Fine. You can say motion failed.
Motion failed to attend recon, period.
Just motion failed.
Motion failed, period?
Motion failed.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Sir?
I want to point out to Reuben, if I can use this conversation, if you have permission, we had last night. I, I sent an email to Reuben into the mayor, actually, earlier this week, asking for some information tonight if I do the business development. I wanted to make sure that I had the information necessary to make the report. What I meant when I sent that was, do you have anything for me to report? Unfortunately, it got taken a different way. And it's a good illustration how sometimes we say one thing when we mean something else. And I suspect this could easily have been the case as well. I, I know that, I had no intention, Reuben called me last night and we very quickly resolved it when we talked with each other face to face. But that does happen sometimes. And in this particular case with Reuben and with the mayor, you know, a very innocent comment on my part was taken quite frankly the other way. And once we had a conversation, it was very quickly over with. So, and I apologize to you last night, Mr. Mayor, I apologize to you because again, I certainly didn't intend it the way it was taken, but sometimes it happens. I think this, you know, the recon is about economics. It is about these programs. I agree with Mr. Trustee Pop, that the grocery store right now doesn't seem to be a viable issue from what he seems to be on that bandwagon. I haven't given up on it either, but.
No, I think it's great that the mayor formed a group to look at, look into a co-op. I applaud that and I said that out of me, to look into it.
Well, just on a side note, you all know how busy it is around here. We didn't have anybody to do work with economic development specifically on staff. Clerk hazer has been very instrumental in helping us move some of those items along. Way beyond the scope of his responsibility, but I appreciate the fact that everybody that's been around here to do as much as they can to get things done, so. And I don't, I don't, Clerk hazer, just on the record, I guess if I may, do you intend any political jabs in recording it the way you did it?
No, I don't think the general public knows what recon is or what's done there. I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir. All right, so I've got a motion to, or a recommendation to eliminate everything after motion failed? Or motion failed to attend recon? Either way?
Yeah, just motion failed.
Motion failed, fine. All right, good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as discussed and amended. All right, no, I'm, I'm, I'll entertain a motion.
You may keep waiting, Mr. Gray.
I didn't, I'm sorry, this is.
I'll section the motion.
Okay, Pop and Holston, all right. Should I, roll call, please?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
And Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, and I apologize for any written misunderstandings. Mr. Clark, do you have anything to report?
No.
Okay, the rely, the misrange report.
This stands as a, the man in the board, the last board meeting, was tasked with reaching out to Mr. Margreth from the P A L to discuss further the bill that was submitted, invoice submitted for fiscal budget 2015-2016. More things were discussed and a request made to Mr. Margreth to implement the use of the village liaison, Mr. Dresbeck. And so communication has begun at this point and Mr. Margreth is putting together an outlined document for us. So at this time, I do not have the document, I should have it next morning.
Realize that, so thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. First, your report. Roll call, please.
I just want to touch on one thing tonight, as far as we go back to two weekends ago when we had about a foot of snow. I did spend about three hours with our superintendent out bowing. And I also do look at the social media aspect of it. And what we need to understand is that the gentlemen are out there doing the best they can. With that snow that we had, it was heavy, it had to go somewhere. With my experience, a lot of people were complaining about, I wouldn't say a lot, let me rephrase that. A few people were complaining about mailboxes being knocked over, that the plows were hitting them. Again, following our superintendent and his small truck, what they do is they use the bigger truck to get about 15 feet away from the curbs. And then they go with the smaller trucks to get as close as they can to curb without hitting the mailboxes. We did have some people out there that were shoveling snow into the street as we were coming at them. We actually had to stop and ask them to get out of the street so they wouldn't get hurt. As the superintendent, who's a trustee with the public, the safety, just please let the gentleman do their job. I understand the frustration. Nobody gets special treatment. I did see a comment that the mayor's treat was as clean as it could be and I know it wasn't because we were up and down it. He was out there doing his due diligence too, helping out the neighbors. Saw it firsthand. A couple of our trustees were out. Just please be patient. I mean, it doesn't happen all the time with that heavy snow. It does take time to get it cleaned out and it's got to go somewhere. Nobody gets special treatment here. We actually did go to a residence house in Country Metals who claimed that the mailbox got knocked over. An officer drum and superintendent Crisell stood out there and explained to a person that it didn't happen because of the weight of snow, it just got knocked over. Again, I kudos our public work, spending the time with them and seeing what they actually do in this stuff instead of just sitting there on social media and guessing that they're not doing the proper work. They put a lot of hours in and I think they should be commended because even after the snow, you've seen them out a couple of days later still trying to clean up. So again, just something like that kind of storm, please be patient.
Trustee Gray, if I may, to members of the public, keep in mind that everybody that works here is here to serve you. Their not, their goal in life is not to antagonize you, it is not to make your life miserable. As much as some people may conjecture that online or whatever else, but do please keep in mind that these are real people that are working behind these vehicles, that have feelings and they give their all to the village. And it's important to recognize that and please, think about your words because they can be very hurtful. They didn't sign up to be the brunt of people's political hack jokes or anything else. They're here because they care about our community and they have a family to take care of in this community as well. Please, just keep that in mind and a compliment every now and then goes a long way. Seems like that thing, things get short at that time of the year, I suppose. I talked to the council, if I may, real quick on this. I do want to ask a question here of the consensus and I'm not real sure legally what we have in this regard. I haven't had a chance to talk to trustees about it, I just frankly just remembered it. But we have a situation, if you will, with the superintendent of public works, you all know that he gets, he's a salaried employee. He works, you know, Billy, you know, he works sometimes 15, 20 hours a day, it seems like, and, or more. Unfortunately, as a result of that, because he's taking care of the community, there's nobody taking care of his own home. And I don't know that it would be prudent for him to stop working, which frankly is pretty much volunteer for him to be out there in a truck. I don't know if it'd be prudent for him to stop working for two or three hours so he can go clear his own driveway. I don't know the legal ramifications, but he's got a truck that he takes home, it's got a plow attached to the front of it. How does the board feel about allowing him to clear his own driveway? Not anybody else's driveway, just his own. I know in other areas, I know where county and township or whatever else will clear driveways for anybody who's an emergency responder, you know. I don't know, I just want to get a thought through the board on that because we get people that frankly, we don't pay a lot in our town. And, you know, I think that it's a concession of concern because it's just something irrelevant, so. I don't know, Larry, is that, is that an appropriate request to consider or how is that, how does that work?
Your honor, in my opinion, it should be a separate. I wouldn't suggest it, I wouldn't advise it. You're using village.
Equipment.
Equipment in a capacity as a private citizen. And I think it might be wise to keep it separate and apart. I know all the villages are run into this problem. And then usually a newspaper, Fox News, sometimes knocks on a door. So I think it might be best to keep it separate and apart.
I just, I'm very sympathetic to the, to the board that puts forth on our staff, so if that's the case. Trustee.
Could he clear his own driveway or does that tell anyone?
Not likely, not in our town.
Yeah, pretty much.
Not likely. Not likely.
With our luck, Fox News will be here next week. That's all I need.
No, I just, I just want to have a full disclosure and ask to, because I'm sure I'm the gentleman that's sensitive to the people that serve our community.
Absolutely.
So, all right.
We are in 20 something and it just doesn't work.
Okay, fair enough.
For the record, I asked about the bringing of salt.
I know.
I'm more than happy than the mayor coming over to my house and doing my driveway for me. As he did this time when you had now a foot, but forty inches of snow off there.
I'm just getting to the connection.
Yeah, there you go. I appreciate that, but I can't stop and clear my driveway, that's not a big deal. The roads don't mean that much to me.
Whoa, wait up. There's no good answer for that one. All right, number two. Mark's in the rec. Trustee Gonzalez is not here, but we do have a resolution and I'm going to ask Attorney Kraszewski if you would mind reading that resolution.
Resolution authorizing participation in the 2015 ComEd Green Region Program for the Fireman's Park Improvement Project. Whereas the village alone desires to undertake a park improvement project and whereas the applicant desires to apply to the ComEd Green Region Program for a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project. And whereas the applicant has received and understands the 2015 ComEd Green Region Program guidelines, therefore be resolved that the village board hereby approves this project and authorize the application to the ComEd Green Region Program in amount of $10,000. And be a further resolved that the applicant commits the expenditure of matching funds in the amount of $10,000 necessary for the project's success. Adopted and approved this 11th day, February 2015.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that moving.
Trustee Pop. Trustee Gray.
Discussion?
Let me get resolution number quick here.
2015 H3?
Trustee Holston, please.
Yes, sir, the money's coming out of where, sir?
I believe it would be coming out of the general fund. But I don't believe that this is actually, it doesn't necessarily mean this is going to happen before the end of this fiscal year, which ends in April. So this is something we can anticipate a budget for during the next fiscal year.
But approving this means we're approving a $10,000 expenditure out of a fund in the general fund.
For matching funds if we, if we're awarded this. Correct. There's no guarantee we'll be awarded this.
The money's going to be used for what? And I see ComEd Green Region, but what's the money?
Basically, kind of park improvements. ComEd didn't ask for anything specific, they were just.
We have something in mind.
There have been some plans, I know the board had approved, was a vantage point to do some design preparations and things for Fireman's Park, some improvements with the drainage and the field and things over there. Pretty extensive, but this one, you put a dent in that, but this is, you know, you take anything you can any way you can, so. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, trustee Horne.
Yes, in light of last week's storm, it's good to remember that water payments, you can do water payments online. You don't need to get up there to the village hall for that. In other items, village's cash on hand is very strong and general fund expense projections are performing well within our fiscal year 2015 budget. So we're on sound financial footing, I'm happy to say. Under your word.
Trustee Holston, business development.
Yes, sir, a couple of notes that were passed on to me tonight. Flannigan State Bank located in the Mall Plaza is getting close to taking occupancy. There are inspections, as I understand, are scheduled. Mr. Pop, you have a handful of that, I'll let you talk about that. Advance Auto Parts also located in that same plaza is coming soon. That's another industry that was signed up. I want to vote where that got started, but maybe the mayor can. Indian Victory Motorcycle located on Governor's Highway is also in the process of coming soon. That is an expansion, if you will, from a local business person who already owns another business in town. So those are all nice, good economic development sound programs. I haven't known a little bit about Indian Victory, they're a customer of Michelin's out where I work and especially bike company. They get a lot of people that will come from all over the country possibly to buy their bikes, which should be an opportunity for us for them to go down to Bryant's and have a nice dinner, particularly if it's Monday night and maybe stay at a hotel or somewhere. Nice work on the part of the folks that are working on this, that's all I ask for.
Thanks very much. I have five building services, trustee Pop.
Four, everyone, we do have quite a few small projects going. Trustee Olson just mentioned some of them. We also had the Will County Health Department coming in. But Mooney Heating and Air are still waiting for fire safety approval. Flannigan Bank, the inspections for the plumbing and electrical were supposed to happen today. I don't know what happened. I remember it was too late for me to get that information. But I wanted to point out that Carol Rack and David have been very, very helpful to me in kind of reporting on these projects. I commend Carol especially, and I really do, because I don't think she gets the notoriety she deserves. An inspection for one building, she could go there a half a dozen or 10 times, trying to straighten things out with the contractors. Just getting them registered with the village is the beginning point. Can't issue a permit until they have a permit, they're working this community. So it just goes on and on. I've got four pages of items that she's taken care of since, you know, December and into January. And again, I don't want to bore yous, but it's a real time consuming job. There's a lot to it that we don't understand. So, kudos to her and, and the report.
Good, sir. Public safety, Reuben, chief, do you have anything to consider on that?
Yeah, we, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the Academy of Council today to start our police explorer program. We're going to host it at the house at the police department on March 26. Anybody who has a young man or young lady between the ages of 14 and 20 are welcome to come over and check it out. Polling point is March 7. Of course, we're always looking for sponsors for that. And there's a storm spotter class coming up. I left the information on trustee basic desk and I don't know the exact date.
So board wants March 7? March 7. And.
March 4?
March 4.
Seven o'clock to nine o'clock, Plainfield Central Hall.
That's it. Okay, Mr. Batista.
Just a dovetail, just announced, talked with Will County today. We're going to host weather spotting class here in the village hall. Respective date is March 30, Monday, March 30 at 1:00 PM, open to the public. Seats are going to go really fast. We'll have special invitations to the police department, fire departments, EMS, EMA, CERT, village officials, obviously, and then the public. We're going to see how many are registered upfront and possibly a second date added to that. But the initial date is March 30, Monday at 1:00 PM.
Can we, can we seat more people that have buildings over here or is this better suited for?
We can.
I just wondered if you have a.
That's a possi, that's a possibility. We actually hold more here.
We.
We're rated for, you know, larger audience.
Okay.
I attended that last year, really very good class.
You don't have to be in emergency management or first responder, every resident actually would be of interest.
Is that something we can record and put on the, the P A YouTube channel or whatever kind of thing?
I will find out.
Okay. What is your others?
What you can do, they have a webpage that's most of the programs they're going to show you are on. You can put that webpage on and most of those have videos and other things, it's excellent.
Okay.
Once you go through the class, there's a certification that comes with this. You can be a certified weather spotter, you can report anytime you see a tornado, you have access, et cetera.
We've got pretty good statistics going around there, I'm just. So, all right. Uh, let's see here. Well, chief, so if you don't mind, I'm exploring, I know something you and I talked about as well. Can you just give everybody kind of a primer on what that is?
It gives anybody between the ages of 14 and 20 the ability to have an exposure to the police department to see if they'd like to have a career in law enforcement. It also reinforces leadership as a goal and it gives the kids an ability to come on, talk to us without having a negative experience. We want everybody to be able to reach out. Plus, we wanted something specifically for the tweens to the 20-year-olds to have something to do here. We thought it was important to get a start.
All right. Mr. Kraszewski.
Thank you, your honor. I have four items for the board's consideration. The first item, which is in your packet, is an engagement letter from Moore Canfield.
The first item, which is in your packet, is an engagement letter from Mayor Campfield, and their bond council on his proposed bond deal that we have upcoming, gentleman's name from Mayor Campfield, Gerald Davidson, by law, he needs an engagement letter signed so, so that he's retained for this bond transaction, his fee comes out of bond proceeds, his fee is $25,000.
And this is just a kind of prerequisite, let's see if you can get the bond adopted?
Absolutely.
So, since the board is indicating that, all right, I'll entertain a motion to approve retaining Mr. Miller Campfield?
Yes, sir.
Uh, for counsel regarding our general obligation lines, um...
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Pop and Gray, roll call, please.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, your honor, the next item is an ordinance relative to Parkings Prohibition on Friendship Drive in Cleveland Avenue, last board meeting, our director of draft ordinance, regarding this manner, Cleveland's copy to DJ and the chief, I'd top for the board's review and consideration.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Just wait for the mayor.
That's fine, I'm just, I'm in a zone tonight, sorry. So, honey, gray, all right, discussion, sir.
Yes, sir, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I remember I thought this was set to request the fire department.
Yes, sir, the request of the Fire Department, it actually creates a difficult situation, not just for fire, but even public works as well, times, and that's the area that's right in front of Red Roof Inn, Mr. Horne, and that's the public street.
Yeah, and I've, I've been there, I've seen the trucks, so I certainly agree with that, but I'm just wondering if we have both good notices to businesses in the area, so they have a right to, in case they object?
There shouldn't be any reason for any of the businesses, we already had some signage on Cleveland already in certain spots, it was sporadic, this just reinforces...
I have to turn you for this opinion, but, I need your legal opinion on this, do we need this, both notices? Well, I would say this because on the zoning committee, we would have had to, if this had gone through zoning.
Does this mean zoning is issued?
Uh, no, 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 stop, so I don't believe, or no, pardon me, I'm sorry, what you may want to consider, send him a notice that within thirty days, his ordinance will be in effect, just to put him on notice, indicating that the ordinance has been approved, it won't be implemented for thirty days, so...
Is it possible for us to do that before we approve it?
We can set a, we can set a date, sort of, for it to start.
Yes, sir, you know, if you can...
I just think in all fairness to the businesses, it'd be appropriate to give them advance notice like we would have residence.
I don't believe it's any of the businesses that actually have any, that are being parking there, it's primarily the one business which is, that is affected by it, and that would be the hotel that's right there, and the hotel knows that, this situation, and frankly, it'd just be a matter of going over tomorrow, and just, so you've copied the ordinance, it was approved, that's the one business that's ultimately affected by it, and I don't think there's any issue with that.
Yes, sir, with all due respect, though, we talked earlier tonight about communication, and how sometimes communication gets messed up unintentionally, the businesses in the area have complained for quite a while about how we do business without representation, my thought here would be that we would give them an opportunity to respond, I don't think they will either, I'm sure in favor of this, but I'd like to see them have an opportunity to respond first.
Okay, so, we've got a motion, we have a second, or, you want to, you want to table this, or do you want to just, I mean, if you want to make a motion to table it, you can, and then somebody has to second that, is that correct?
I leave under Robert's rules and orders, I can table them, I don't need them with them.
It has to be seconded, I'll tell you.
We have the option to call for a motion to table, and then, that would take precedence over the motion, correct?
Well, before we do that, I need to keep discussing this first, because that would, that would lock us in the table, correct?
Only if it's seconded and in the majority votes for the table, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, what is it, sir?
Go ahead, I'm sure you can...
No, go ahead.
Again, I'm for the motion, but I just think it'd be appropriate to please let the businesses know ahead of time, that's all I'm saying, and I think giving them notice before we vote on would be the appropriate thing to do, it's just treating our businesses with respect.
If I may, and again, no disrespect, this has been going on for a couple of years, from my understanding, especially from the Fire Department, they reapproached us about this, and again, I know you revisited the last meeting, as we discussed, as far as by Red Roof Inn, that was the major one we were looking at, because the semi trucks are sitting on a ninety-degree angle street, that if, God forbid, something happened, there's going to be an issue with the Fire Department or ambulance to get down there. As far as Cleveland Street goes, you are correct, there are already signs there, we would just be reinforcing that with newer signs if that need be, that was the discussion two weeks ago, is Red Roof Inn was the majority one, but we had to put in Cleveland Street so we wouldn't have to go through this again and redo the ordinance.
Yeah, I completely agree with the ordinance, I just think that we've had plenty of time, and we just need to get ourselves into the habit of notifying businesses ahead of time that we're doing something, we've already had people from business approach us and say, we're not business friendly, we don't pay attention, I just think it's not going to make a big difference if we wait another month, we just need to make sure they are notified that we're going to do this, if they have an objection, they can bring it, we would do the same thing if this was going to be called a season.
It's my understanding that the business over there is aware of this situation, and...
There's more than one business over there, trustee Moore, there's a car, there's a truck wash, I, again, I agree with the, with the idea of doing it, there's a truck wash over there, there's a, a industrial building over there, and there is a hotel, and I just think proper protocol that we can set for now and the future is to notify these people that we're looking at this.
Uh, let me, let me ask one question, it's by, uh, superintendent Cruzell, we haven't asked you a question pertaining to this, if you could just help us understand, you're the feet on the street, you're the feet on the street for the village in that regard, you've interacted with the fire chief and heard their concerns, before we take a vote on the table or anything else, answer this for me if you will, how many businesses are actually on Friendship, Friendship Drive, correct?
Just one.
One business, and what business is that?
Red Roof Inn.
Okay, is Red Roof Inn aware of the concerns of the Fire Department?
They are.
Are they opposed or in favor of supporting the Fire Department's position on this?
They were in favor of it, only for the fact that they had seventy available spaces in the lot, and the only people that were parking against there were the people in the semis that weren't utilizing the truck stop area for parking.
Okay.
That was the word I got from the front desk, they did not matter either way, because there wasn't the local patients that were parking, there were cars.
So, so just to clarify, then, we have had a dialogue with, staff has had a dialogue with the property owner or the business that is most affected by this?
Several times, and in fact, to Holston's knowledge here, or if he didn't know, the truck wash, there already is no parking stated in front of that old drive as you go out of what we call Cleveland, on that road anyway, following the bend is where we would pick up with the no parking, and we bow through the truck area there, but the only business that was really affected by that request was the actual Red Roof Inn, and they've already been aware of that several times on that, we're just trying to move it forward. If I can make a recommendation to notice it, we can notify them again in writing that this has passed, as council said, give it thirty days before it's done, we would have to do that anyway, if we post the signs by law, to give them a grace period to notify them.
You'd have to order the signs anyhow, so it wouldn't matter.
There would be some additional labor, we're not going to try to pound them in there, but giving officially, you know, sign them.
Thank you, thank you, all right.
May I make this fast?
Yeah, so, so, so right now, let me just, let me clarify, if I may, so we have a request to table, and trustee Pop, do you have more discussion, or do you want?
I, that's, I wanted to discuss something.
Thank you, sir.
I had a question for Mr. Cruzell, these trucks are, no one's in them, they're sleeping in rooms, are they not?
Correct.
So then trucks are out there for many hours, blocking the street, not allowing a fire truck, if they had a fire, they couldn't get in.
They're correct.
Very possibly, okay?
They're correct.
Now, I know it's been going on for quite a while, chances of it having a fire in thirty days, I don't like that, it bothers me, because with bad luck, it could happen, so if there's a way we can ask them to monitor that, where they don't allow them during this thirty-day period, to at least monitor the truckers not allowing to park them, I mean, if it's their truckers that are sleeping there with their trucks...
I can post ahead of time, and we can give them a thirty-day grace period, it wouldn't mean anything, the signs would be there, but I would only take your recommendation, I'll do whatever.
Those you understand, I will.
Okay, so, as it stands right now, we have a motion to approve the ordinance as printed in front of you, we have a second on that, we have a motion to table, do I have a second to table?
I'll second it, see what it goes.
Okay, can we get a roll call on the table?
The motion was made by Holston to table?
Yes, sir, and then seconded by Pop.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Holston?
Yes.
Or?
No.
Pop?
Yes.
Two to two, your honor. Do you have the action number to vote, or if you don't, the motion dies?
I see the relevance of the concerns addressed by both sides, I think that there's legitimacy in both aspects of this, I know this is something that the Fire Department has had concerns about for, has dedicated years, we are working diligently to have a healthy relationship with the Fire Department and our local businesses. In this particular case, I'm going to err on the side of, I'm not going to say it's an error, but I'm going to lean towards the recommendation of our public work superintendent and his exposure, along with the fire chief's recommendation that this is something of an emergency relevance, not emergency in a timeliness, but emergency as in public safety, I'm going to vote no. We have a, that motion failed, if I understand correctly, so then we have a motion to accept the ordinance as is, I will state that if for some reason somebody wants to put a modification, they can do that this time, if I understand correctly?
Yes, sir.
So, if there's any stipulations that the board feels relevant to post the signs, but allow a grace, or something of that sort, that would be an instruction that would be given to the Police Department, not to enforce, but to allow public force to go ahead and post them for a certain set amount of time, if that is something the board would like to consider, to make sure that the word gets out, and yet, Larry, would that be an acceptable way to deal with that?
Yes, sir.
If somebody wants to make a motion to amend the ordinance, or amend the implementation of it, I should say, they can do that, otherwise, otherwise it stands as is. Okay, no takers on that, the motion stands to take the ordinance as is, and I can roll call it, please.
Trustee Pop?
No.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
No.
Or?
Yes.
Two to two, your honor.
And again, based on previous statements, I'll say yes.
Thank you, mayor, excuse me.
In fact, where is it, honor?
I'm sorry, yes.
Seventeen fourteen.
Proceed, sir.
Thanks. Hold up, shoe right there.
Thank you, mayor, the next item is that, the properties at two five seven 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 and two five nine seven five South Cleveland are being sold, initial developer of Northern Builders, they subsequently, they sold it to a company called Metro Chicago Acquisition, I believe, now Metro Chicago Acquisition is selling it to a company called Ex, Exter from Pennsylvania, they, this is in a TIF district, we issued a note to Northern Builders six, seven years ago on diff, on two different projects, according to that note, they are supposed to get the board's approval of the assignment of the note to the new buyer, it doesn't affect our responsibility, it does affect where we make that payment, would indicate to the board, from what I understand, from council, who's been very good on behalf of the seller, it appears, though, they lost the developer's notes, it's happened before, but they are asking us for three things, one, a consent assignment, allowing them to sell the property to the new buyer, again, it doesn't affect our responsibility, two, a stopple letter, where the stopple letter basically indicates is that we acknowledge a TIF in existence, we acknowledge that certain monies are due in owing, two, under two notes, and three, they will ask for a substitute note indicating that, it's basically a replacement note, they will help, hold us harmless in case someone does find the note, there won't be a responsibility paying the first note, but they are asking permission for the assignment, they are asking permission to issue a stopple letter, and to issue a new note to the new buyer, this transaction should take place, the closing, I'd say by the end of this month, we're not involved per se, doesn't, we're not buyer seller, we're just indicating we recognize the note's due in owing, and that a new note is being issued.
All right, Larry, if you would, I, I wanted to ask a question, I know I have some, is this pertaining to the property that was at one time Allied Two, the building there, that Allied Two resided in for a while, Southern Most Building on Cleveland, I believe that's the one, and then, is it also pertaining to the vacant property to the south of there, or is that a separate transaction?
It's a separate transaction.
And then, we had some concerns that I believe you, you had talked to at one point about the previous council for the property to the south, which all, at one time was all Northern Builders, about our need to adjust the way the road issues were there?
Yes.
And is there some relevance, if we're going to issue something of the sort, that we need to make sure that we also stipulate our concerns, now, is this only applying to the own property, but we should probably have those discussions pertaining to reiterating what was told to you by previous council, to make sure that those verbal agreements are codified, and a new agreement if there be one?
I can check with them, your honor, I, I know, what we're attempting to do is, I think, straighten out Cleveland Avenue?
We'll take it south, and then, right?
I, I believe Northern owns that last remaining parcel land that will affect Cleveland the most, I will check with Mr. Kelly, who's counsel for the new buyer, indicating, expressing our concern about Cleveland Avenue.
Sure.
Whether Allied was back there, that's...
That's yours, you got another?
Yeah, I don't remember.
Okay, all right, anybody, we're not going to vote on this tonight, this is just a stab for you, correct?
We'd like to, I think they're trying to close by the end of this month, they would like a vote from the board, again, it...
It's kind of hard to vote, it's something we don't have in front of us, though, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, we need to have those, those that you can throw us?
I can, I can check with them on the roadway issue.
Do they have some plans for the village?
I just think it's a, it's an investment.
Just a statement?
Yeah, I think that there's, I think it's leased out yet, I think it's just an investment, they're, they're flipping it, is it going to interest rate on the note, I think there's six more years left on it, it's just, it's an investment, it's, in fact, the company coming in is from Cleveland, meaning Pennsylvania, this is probably the fourth time that property's been sold.
So, there's no change on our end other than the new one?
The only change we'll hit, make, trustee Holston, is we'll make a payment to them versus Metro.
Right, if anything were changed, then I'd like to talk about it, because that's seven percent interest, it's very high.
Yeah, I think there's some...
If it's the same, I, I think we're almost honor bound not to, but if anything changes, I think we ought to talk about it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I concur with you on that, on the number of issues.
And I agree, the only caution I would have, under that redevelopment agreement, they do need our approval, but our approval cannot be in its standard. It's got to be, it can't be unreasonably withheld.
No, nothing changes. I understand what you're saying, I agree with you. Nothing's changed, and then I won't get at that, but if anything changes, then that's something we should be talking about. If it's just a name change of the company, then.
That's basically.
We're all honor bound to honor it.
I would think based on the fact that we get those concerns about the verbal agreements that have been taken place in the past, it would be advisable to table this, table this to our next regular meeting.
We've got another meeting this morning.
We get, well, we have two this morning, two more.
We can have a special?
We're having one next week.
You can talk about that.
Maybe we can have it by then.
Yeah. Can we have it, with the board and mayor's permission, have it on then, because I.
We'll have it, let's put it on the next agenda, and then if we're ready for it, fine, if not, we'll, that's fine. And if any of you trustees have any concerns specifically regarding the parameters of that, reach out to the administrator and he'll funnel all that to the attorney through the concerns.
So what, we'll have this?
We'll table this until next week. That'll be fine.
We have a motion to table?
Throw it on the floor at this point. Motion to table?
Yes.
Tag it.
Horn and Gray, roll call this.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item is the general obligation of my ordinance not to exceed, I believe it's supposed to be five point six million dollars. This ordinance was prepared by the bond council, Darryl Davidson. It sets forth the parameters of what we'll do with that money, if we are able to obtain the money. It appears as though we're trying to sell the bonds, if the market holds, by the end of March, early April. The bond market's real busy right now because of certain matters, but this ordinance gives the board, you're given the direction to the underwriter, which is Bear, who came in on a couple occasions in the fall, telling them to market the bonds. The five point six includes the cost of issuance, cost of rating agencies, cost of underwriters' counsel. The net proceeds will be, as we talked about before, are roughly five million dollars. Darryl, strike that. Delena, Welkimer, Tom Gavin, can be present if the board deems it appropriate to go over the numbers. I know Darryl and Ruben involved quite a bit, but they have offered if the board wants to talk about it further, if they're willing to come in and talk about the numbers. The rates are, right now, reasonable. They're confident that we will get the bonds sold. They got some questions. I know Darryl's been working on pretty hard about some of the background information they need, but this ordinance is up for the board's review of consideration. Kind of sort of.
I was just going to interject here if I could, and that is that I know Darryl's been working on doing some research. We have another two point two million dollar bond that's currently outstanding, that's a geo-vacuum for one of our TIF districts. Darryl's been doing some diligent research about paying that bond off and then consolidating that into a new one, indirectly, I guess, if you will. I think it's advisable if we table this until our next meeting, until more diligence and homework can be done on that, to find out, is it best interest to do that or proceed with this one as is? And I think that our next meeting is actually going to be about the Egyptian Trail. So maybe we can have Delena, et cetera, present at that meeting to give some parameters on how to proceed, in either case.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Then you made a motion to table to.
Unless somebody wants to pass this tonight, I think we'll do a little more homework because it hurts a lot.
Here's my question to that, as far as tabling this one until the next meeting, is this a pressing issue we're, we talked about before?
I asked Delena, because they watch the market every day. If it's one week, ten days, we're okay. If you go beyond that, like early March, then it's a different story. But if you go like the next special meeting or the next regular board meeting, we should be okay. They won't make any guarantees, but they feel pretty confident. The market looks, right now, the market's pretty good.
And the reason I bring that up is because I know that our special meeting with Barnesworth is going to be, just a very long meeting, because I know what's at stake.
Right.
Do we want to keep adding stuff to that night, where?
It's kind of hand in hand, because that's part of our concern of course, this, our road projects, what this is regarding. So I think that once we clarify what's going on with probably the biggest part of our projects there, it's going to get more for us to know that, before we actually pick a number and then find out we fell short. Because just even doing the, what do you call, the processing of the bonds, you don't want to have to go back in a year or two and do it again, because you're paying another hundred thousand dollars more just for the issuance process. And you don't want to do that unnecessarily. You'd rather just, if you figure out that you need it, figure out what you need. Don't go crazy, more than you need, but figure out what you need and get that, because if you have to go back and do it again, you're paying through the nose for all the, yeah. So if it's okay with the board, if we can table, I'll entertain a motion to table till next week. No idea if motion.
You can get first.
I don't get to make a motion right here, I just get to ask them.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll say.
All right, thank you. And then Horn and Pop, and then we'll do a roll call on the table.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop? Yes.
Anybody, sure, if we got to revisit something anyhow.
That's not it, no.
Old business, we're having the listener interview, and trustee Holston is in process of moving forward on the landlord slash, et cetera, concerns, and I'm not sure what the current status is, but I think he's got meetings planned.
Still got meetings planned with the Phil Fisk today all night. One of the public, private citizens that has expressed interest in this is present tonight, and I gave him a copy of the ordinance, I'll be working with him privately as well.
Sure.
And I'll try to have something by the first of March to you for the trustees, for them to begin to review. Maybe we can put some closure to this by the end of March. I know Police Chief is working on his nuisance ordinance, I don't know if he is on timing on that. We had talked at one time about timing that together, but if we do, we do, we don't.
I think it's prudent that we actually put them together, because people are going to expect that we have a comprehensive thing on there, so I know there are going to be technically two separate ordinances, but.
He's got plenty of time on him.
All right. Nothing else on our old business. Openly to public knowledge of the items. Please come to the podium, give your name and address, and if you can, a little bit of comments, three months.
Good evening. Brian and Cam, two five six six five South Governor's Highway, Brian's place. Trustees, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. As of January first, twenty fifteen, seven new taxes were introduced into Moni. These new taxes were cloaked in an ordinance that called for the establishment of a public safety and economic development program. The ordinance was passed in November. Businesses affected by these new taxes include those licensed to sell alcohol, tobacco, firearms, vehicles, cannabis, fuel, and lodging. Now, I'm here today representing my business and my customers, no one else. And since I have the potential of losing business under this ordinance, I want to know, what does a one percent sales tax on alcohol served in my establishment have to do with public safety and economic development?
First of all, if I may, Mr. Cam, it would be worthwhile if you would, not to be confrontational, but it would be worthwhile if you would get your facts right. There were not seven new taxes implemented. The hotel and fuel tax were on the books. Larry, how many years?
I believe the hotel tax probably.
Ten, twelve?
Nineteen ninety five.
Nineteen ninety five?
And the gasoline gas probably eight, nine years ago.
Okay. So.
Since when?
I would say served maybe off top of the head, eight or nine years ago.
I talked with the owner of Country Host Motel, who said they had conversations with you last year about these taxes, and you said that we need the revenue, so that wasn't anything that could be done about that.
The, I don't remember talking to the owner of the Country Host, I do remember talking to the, one of the Inbeams, which is an owner of the American's Best and Super Eight. But the, the ordinance that implemented the hotel tax was implemented, I believe, when you say, was under Larry Coffer when he was mayor?
Yeah, I believe the one E B L S was being proposed, so you're probably talking nineteen ninety five, nineteen ninety six?
Okay, I understand, I understand, Jay, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I said, all I care about is the one percent tax that was labeled against me.
Okay.
And now it's sold, what does that have to do with public safety and economic development?
Well, let me, let me address you, Cam, I'm going to ask you questions, and I'm going to try to answer, but first of all, I want to set the record straight if I can. You have made it clear to a number of people that the Village Board has implemented a slew of taxes that nobody in this room has had anything to do with. So I just want to make sure we clear the record on that, because when you post things at your business, and when you go around the public telling everybody that the current board is implementing a hotel tax or fuel tax, just to clarify, we had nothing to do with that. Nobody sitting in this room had anything to do with that, just to clear the record. The other taxes, as you're referring to there, the public safety, economic development issue there is, our goal is, as you and I talked, when you were coming to the post office, a month ago, approximately, I'm not sure when it was exactly, but you and I talked about this. You didn't seem like you really wanted to talk, but we talked anyhow. And one of the things we had was a problem in our town, is because once we exceeded five thousand residents, we had to deal with the increased cost of the downstate police pension, because our police had to leave I M R F and had to go to the downstate police pension. So we had to deal with that. For the last couple of years, we've had to levy taxes to compensate for that participation in that. Our goal, as you and I discussed previously, was to try to find a replacement tax, so that we don't have to depend on public property taxes as much as possible, we can defer that, if we can find an alternate source to facilitate that. The other issue is that these are, these are taxes on things that are not necessities. They are conveniences, things that are considered to be something that would not interfere with somebody being able to live and eat and survive, if you will, in our community. These are things that hopefully would be more of an impact on the people that are commuting through or whatever like that. And the one percent, you're talking about a penny per dollar, I'm not trying to minimize the impact of that on you or your patrons, Brian, but it seemed reasonable. It was passed by the board. There was a great deal of research that had gone into it, our finance director had looked into it, there's a number of other communities that have implemented similar things. As a matter of fact, ours was very light in comparison to towns like Homewood, who has like a five percent entertainment tax that they imposed. They have a eating tax, things of that sort. That was not our goal. Our goal was merely to try to find a way to eliminate our need to depend on the property taxes to pay for our downstate police pension, among other things. So anything we could do to help people lower the property taxes, and when you and I talked, you were like, yeah, my property taxes have gone up three times or something since I've been here in what, twenty five years? And not three times, but triple, if I recall correctly how you described it. It is an economic development partnership as well, because your business was taken into account, as were all the other businesses that are participants in this program, because there is a partnership with you that says that twenty five percent of the funds that you collect are contributed to that fund, that support mechanism, are available for you the following year. So if you come to the village and say, I want to improve my signage, I want to improve my permanent landscaping, or I want to make improvements to my public bathrooms, those are three of the things that we know break people in or discourage people from staying at sometimes, and in any of our businesses. And those are three things that were specifically stated, that there is a matching fund grant allowance for you. So I don't know how much you generate, Ryan, I don't see your numbers, but theoretically, if you were to generate five or ten thousand dollars a year, that would go towards that. The portion that go, the twenty five percent of that would be set aside for you to have available to make improvements to your facilities. And that would ultimately, ideally, help you grow your business even further. Get you better visibility than what you may currently have, and help better take care of your patrons that are there. So our goal is not to be insensitive to the business, but to cooperate and collaborate with you on your endeavors. At the same time, recognizing our need to pay for certain things, and without having to further the demand on public property taxes. And I know when we talked about it, you know, out there on the street, it seemed like you were, at the time at least, it seemed like that was a reasonable consideration, because nobody wants to continue paying high property taxes here.
Well, I agree with that. Just to educate you now, the new tax is in at the one percent on alcohol, two percent on alcohol beverages purchased from the retailer, two percent on alcohol on tobacco.
Correct.
One percent transaction on title vehicles.
Correct.
One penny per gallon?
No.
That was already.
That was there before.
Okay. And ten percent on lodging?
That was already there.
That was already there, okay.
And just so you know also, the lodging tax, the lodging tax actually goes, a significant portion of that goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, for them to actually help promote our community, so people will visit our town because they hear about our hotels and our other amenities that we have here. So hopefully, if we're providing the right materials to them, not just sending them our money, they're actually helping us grow our business potential for travelers. So I would hope that your business would benefit from that as well, even though you're not actually contributing directly to that.
Well, I have a capital reserve for capital improvements in my building. It's nice to know that the government can help me as far as improving my public bathrooms or landscaping, but as a business person, as long as I've been in business, I have a capital reserve for those issues.
True.
As far as going online, I'm involved with all kinds of, of social networking.
Sure.
To make my business more available to people on the internet. My concern a little bit now is that Chicagoland Speedway brings a lot of business into Moni, and there's a five percent difference between Mantino and Moni with regard to lodging right now. And now with the other increases with regard to people who come to Chicagoland Speedway events, stay in Moni, shop in Moni, buy gas in Moni, buy packaged goods in Moni, have breakfast, lunch, and dinner in Moni. These people, when they take a look at the numbers, might think twice in my stay in Mantino, which is only ten miles down the road, shopping Burkhots for their packaged goods, by, for instance. You know, as I said, as I told you, Jay, in the car, and in the letter that I sent to the board, it's not the hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars a month that bothers me. I have to increase my product mix now to account for these taxes, because my prices include the price of taxes, so I have to impute or take out those taxes, and I have to up the price, and people are asking me, what's going up? Why are you going up? There's no distributor price increase, there's no manufacturing price increase. I said, we got to look to the village, they're increasing the taxes. And you told me about these benefits, and I didn't even realize that we're trying to help Chief Sipkar with the pension fund.
Right.
And that to me is a good, is a good thing.
Sure.
Now, the last time this village instituted a tax increase was when Larry was the mayor, and they added a one percent tax to the seven percent tax that existed to eight percent, because we're going to put a mall over the northwest part of Moni. Well, that never happened.
Sure.
Of course, we stayed at eight percent, nothing changed there. But I hope, I know you realize, and I'm sure Darryl took this into consideration also, that P O T O N is still a seven and a half percent. Moni, or Mantino and Kekiki County mostly, six point two five percent. So when people go online and they take a look at where they're going to stay, where they're going to eat, you know, they're looking at their dollars also. And I just was a little concerned about it. The more I learn about it, now that you've relevated or related, this particular type of expense is something that I can see as a real plus in helping the pension fund, then I can, I can, I can back down. All I wanted to be was more informed. I think the business community needs to know that.
Brian, if I could, real quickly also, I know that when I've been to your establishment, you have some really good food there, by the way.
Thank you.
The, I believe the menu indicated something about Moni tax eight percent. I might get a mince hair, split hairs with you about it, but the reality is, most of that goes to Springfield.
I understand.
I just want to make sure you clarify, so you and I. I just wanna make sure you're clear, so you and I at least are on the same page.
It just says, it just says sales tax, it doesn't say anything about what Moni gets or doesn't get.
That's fine, that's fine. I, for some reason, I thought it did, just to clarify on that so that we're on the same page. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, President.
Appreciate it. Anybody else who wrote in the public?
Good evening. I'm Kathy King Waters. I live at 26221 Country Lane. I basically came this evening to ask the board to consider an ordinance for clearing snow from sidewalks. There's ordinances about not littering, not placing removed snow on sidewalks, and about property maintenance of sidewalks, but nothing currently about clearing them. And having had a very large snow recently, I had always taken it for granted.
Sure.
That sidewalks had to be cleared. And I have a nearly grown daughter, but snow is hit deep in places.
Sure.
And with a 618 bus pickup, which is dark.
Sure.
I don't want her walking in the street either.
So, can I ask you a question? Are you asking the village to clear your sidewalks? Are you asking the people required to do it?
I'm asking people, right now businesses are required.
Sure.
People, there's no requirement and it's basically if they do it or not. I had always assumed that was a part of property ownership. I said, "The kids need the sidewalks."
Sure.
"Clear the sidewalks." Asking the village to consider something because we have become very family oriented.
Sure.
Trying to do events. Even the village logo has a swing on it.
Sure.
And I live in a subdivision with sidewalks, I want the kids on sidewalks.
Sure.
It's the most safe for them.
Sure.
So, I know this is not something that can be decided instantly, but I would appreciate the village's consideration.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Kathy, the, I know where you live, on the Utes. The issue you have, is that with sidewalks with neighbors for example, or is that getting to the street?
Primarily the street. I mean...
Because your kids have, obviously your daughter has to stand somewhere and wait.
She has to stand somewhere and wait.
Where's she standing? Is she standing on my...
Well, I'm, she's in my car.
Well...
Exactly, it should be the corner of Orchard and Plunge.
Okay.
And it was hit deep, you know?
Is that where the snow has plowed it, or is that actual sidewalk there?
Sidewalk is over, was over needy, now it's melted some, compacted some. It's still, if she was to walk in it, it would suck her shoes off.
Is the area the sidewalk?
It is the sidewalk.
Kathy, I think there's a couple of things here. We've talked internally regarding how to best manage a situations like this. In the past, the school district has not provided us with a list of even a bus stops. It's kinda hard for us to work with them if we don't even know where they're at. And I don't know if they're, if that's some sort of a homeland security threat that they don't think that we should be entitled to be, I'm saying that's a little bit humorous for us. But if we don't know where they're at, there's not much we can do about it, number one. Number two, sorry. It would be prudent for the school district to consider making sure that the bus stop is actually on somebody's driveway as compared to putting it on a corner where it might be 100 feet from a driveway. And the reason for that being is typically driveways are gonna be cleared. We had also talked about possibly, even if they did it, fire hangers because we have a responsibility as does the fire department to do what we can to clear the fire hangers. Typically, there's not enough room for kids to stand around that. But theoretically, we can identify which ones are which and, you know, make some space there, but typically that's a grassy area there too. You don't really want kids standing in a wet grass. You just know where otherwise.
My neighborhood does have the sidewalks and in that every place in Moni does.
So, I'm thinking the best thing we could do is if you don't mind even reaching out to the school district, and I know I have requested from the superintendent, Alyssa the bus stops, I have not yet received it. I believe our public works superintendent may have found a resource for gathering that. But in the past, that was never the case. And it might be prudent for us to talk to the school district about in the future, thinking about where the bus stops are gonna be at so that they're not putting them in the middle of a big grassy area which is not grassy during the worst of the winter. It would seem prudent to me that that would be the case. I know Brian, where you live out there in the country a little bit more, they wouldn't think about putting it in somebody's yard, they'd put them in somebody's driveway before the buses do their pickups. So, just because we're in town doesn't mean we shouldn't do the same thing. And unfortunately, when the snow is as bad as it is, our corners are some of the worst because that's where you have more snow accumulating at one cross section than anywhere else, if you will. And oftentimes, just to get the area cleared, they have to push them in towards the corners.
But it's more than the corners however.
What's that?
It is more than the corners however.
Correct.
Because I don't expect my husband to clear the sidewalk all the way to the end of the block.
I don't.
And...
I'm not saying anybody else should have to.
He did it for the next door which has been empty for years, foreclosed.
Sure.
So, she could get that far, but then after that, it was knee deep for...
Sure.
A good ways. So, just something to consider for people to, one summer wide path.
So, if you don't mind reaching out to the school board, Ruben, do you mind reaching out to the school district and seeing if we can coordinate for next year? I mean, this year's already established, but before they start getting their bus schedules and everything else figured out for next year, hopefully we can work something out where we can get ahead of this and preemptively deal with it for the future. And even putting up people's driveways would be a lot better than... Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Janet Blumberg, I live at 5211 Orchard Trail in Moni. I'd like to talk about the snow removal. First of all, I absolutely know that the superintendent works really hard and this is not disrespect to him or his team, but in terms of what Trustee Gray was saying, we are the public, then we're who is being served with the snow, the snow removal. I couldn't get out of my drive for two days. I'm an able-bodied person. I cleared my drive after the snow plows went through. Within two hours, the same snow plow went down my road and filled it up again. I half did it because my heart was pounding on trying to clear the drive. I go back into the house, two hours later, the snow plows go back down my road again, three times in maybe four hours. So, either we need a better plan to snort, to plow the roads so that we're not causing something as, I mean, it was, it was hit, I couldn't get out of the drive. I couldn't leave my drive. So, you weren't serving me that day. That road may have been clear, but I couldn't drive on it because I couldn't get my car out of the drive. Thank you.
No, I lost, I lost count after I shoveled out some kind of road.
I will say that in reviewing a number of other communities, there is a, I don't know how to say this, there's a strategic way to shovel a driveway that may or may not always work, and that is, instead of shoveling from your garage to the street, it helps if you shovel from the street towards your house and to the yard. That way, you don't have that big pile that automatically gets clipped by the plows coming through. Additionally, what I know that some people do, and I've done, is the down, upstream, if you will, path, as you're approaching your house, whatever word your house is at, if you're, as you're approaching your house, if you were to clear the snow, and that's what I do, I get a snow blower, and I actually clear the snow along the edge of the curb closer than I know the plows are gonna go. So, there's nothing left under plow by the time they cross my driveway. So, I clear the snow on the street along the curb just to make sure there's no snow left for the plow to actually push on my driveway. And that does help. It may not work everywhere, you know, some streets still even have curbs, like we're, I think we're Trusty Holston, you look, there's not even, not even curbs out there. So, it's not always the same parameters there, but there is a technique that is involved and I wouldn't say that's gonna work every time, but it does help. So, we're sensitive to your concerns, Superintendent.
I'd like to elaborate on your comments. We don't ever do anything intentionally to bury residents in. Our task is to make sure that the streets are safe for emergency personnel to get from point A to point B. We stay out there for excessive amounts of time. But keep in mind, if we have a 20-inch snowfall in a 24-hour period, we are taking half of that volume of that street that we're trying to clear, whatever width of the street it is, there are numerous widths in this town, and we're moving it to the edge of the road. So, although it looks, you know, 15, 18 inches, 20 inches in your, in your yard, we're taking that full depth across the front of the street to keep it open and move it to the edge of the driveway. And, you know, we've had a couple of years of uncharacteristic snowfalls that have come not over a delayed period of time, but within a short period of time. So, this last couple of years, we've been beat up pretty bad with the snow. So, it's never public works intention to bury anybody in, but because we are out there for numerous hours keeping those streets clear, that is why. I mean, we dropped 18 inches of snow in 24 hours, so, and our blades don't get it on the first pass. We're looking into different ways to be able to clear the streets, it costs money to do that, but it's never our intent to bury somebody in. We always ask that maybe you wait until the snow falls or drops, let us clear our roads and then you can attack it once and be done with it. But when there's 20 inches of snow, I know a lot of people, when we were out and Trustee Gray can, was witness to this, they were at the ends of their driveways and they didn't want to move, they just thought we were putting the snow there on purpose and there's no other way to put this, place to put the snow. So, we do our best and areas where we can, we make pile points, big piles. We came back after the snow fell and removed those piles with our trucks and our end loaders. But it's never our intention to bury somebody in to their driveway. We just, we're tasked with keeping streets clean. Many times throughout that night, I was called personally by our fire chief and our police station where cars were stuck in snow, deep areas, we had to get them out, we had to make ambulance calls to people that may have overdone it trying to snow and clear out their streets. And so, we were, we were out there all night long plowing the roads and keeping them safe for our emergency personnel to be able to respond. And if you remember, that was a Super Bowl night, we had a lot of people on the street coming back from watching the big game, you know, and they were coming in late and, and there was a lot of people out. So, last couple of years of this uncharacteristic, no, I think we kinda all forgot what a Chicago winter could be like. And everybody put their snow blowers to full use last couple of years and it's, it's never our intent to bury somebody in. We just ask to, let us get our job done and then maybe at that point, you only attack it once, you don't feel like you're always getting picked on, we're not picking on you. Our plow trucks have their own routes to take care of because the town is big and just keeping one area clean is a big task sometimes for a single individual truck, so. But we do thank everybody that cleans sidewalks and streets. We've discussed numerous ways to make that better and we'll keep, we'll keep, we're always improving our after-action reports for our snow, we're always looking into ways to modify it and make it better and we always take everything into consideration when doing that. We try to change things, sometimes their epic fails and they don't work, but we at least have to say we tried it to make it work and go through those growing pains. But for the most part, we had an internal video going back and forth with everybody else commuting back to their homes and all the other municipalities around the area and I can tell you by far our streets were the best.
Sure.
And I take that with pretty good pride. Thank you.
And just to say, that wasn't, that was not disrespect to you, Jay.
Understood.
It was just, that was on the second day and it wasn't snowing and I couldn't get out. I know it was done with the best of intentions, but I couldn't get out of my drive.
And it is, I have to say, it is almost humorous. I was driving through Gulf Vista the day after and it was kinda funny because I'm driving through Gulf Vista just to see what their roads were because we don't maintain those. And I saw a guy clearing his driveway, he just shooting it right out in the middle of the street, his nose hit his nerves, not across the street, it's been so far. And I'm thinking to myself, "My goodness." And, and I think everybody kinda has this attitude, "Well, I don't want it in my yard, I don't want it in my driveway, so I don't care about anybody else in town," is almost what it seems like because when they throw it out in the street, then all of a sudden they create a speed bump, almost a hazard for everybody else that's going through there. And the plows are gonna have to come through again just to clean up what other people are dirty in the streets with. So, it's difficult because we need to realize we're not working against each other, but at times, it becomes that way. You know, we gotta clear the streets for safety reasons. We're all burdened by the fact that God decided to bless us with the snow and it wasn't on Christmas Day, you know, so...
I may not just say on the light side, it doesn't help you with your driveway, but I think Mr. Griselle, our Department of Public Works Superintendent, will confirm that the majority of the complaints on the snow plowing the streets came from Gulf Vista. And Gulf Vista is a private community with private plowing, has nothing to do with the village. So, they did a good job as much as they could, it was a terrible snowfall. I just had to throw that one in there. Not against us, Sid.
Anything else for open to the public? Okay. I don't believe there's anything for executive session there. Nothing, no actually regarding the executive session, there's all of that. And the time is now 8 o'clock, John, your ten motion, is your...
Make ten motion? What's that?
We have to think twice about it. Pop and Gray, throw a call please.
Holston?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you.